Okay, we're gonna call this meeting in New York City Council over. As soon as Autumn gets done shuffling her money around, she'll call it over.
All right. Mr. Johnson. Mr. Marmee.
Here.
Mr. Rath.
Here.
Mr. Roletta. Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Bub.
Here.
Mr. Cost.
Here.
Mrs. Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Guthrie.
Here.
And Ms. Hall.
Here.
Thank you, Autumn. We have the input. Next on the agenda this evening, we have the invocation tonight, which will be by Mrs. Floyd, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Would you value that, please? Almighty God, we thank you for this beautiful spring weather that we're now finally having. We ask that you be with us, and especially tonight, be with several people within the community who've had difficult times. We used to be with the family of Judy Pierce, with the family of Alex Roletta Jr., and with Pat Conner and his family as they had a fire at their home that was pretty serious. We ask that you be with us tonight, as we have many decisions to make, and some of them very important to the community. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Next on the agenda this evening, we have caucus. That's a time for council to discuss anything that may be on the agenda they'd like to discuss this evening. Do we have anything? Mrs. Torres.
Could you excuse, please, Alex Roletta from the death of his grandfather, and getting ready for graduation from Ohio State, and Curtis Johnson, please?
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Second by Mr. Marmee. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, I will be abstaining from Resolution 1528. I sit on the Board of Directors for the Behavioral Health Partners and also the South North City Association.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Blake. Anything else under caucus? Okay. Next, we have the minutes for this council from April 20th, 2015. We have a motion to accept those. Motion by Mr. Rath. Second by Mr. Bub. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Thank you. Those will be accepted. We have four reports of standing committees this evening, one from finance, one from service, one from economic development, and one from personnel. Without objection, those will also be received and filed. No reports from city officials tonight. We have three communications, one from William Moats, one from Daniel Crawford, and one from Katie Blanton. Again, without objections, those will also be received and filed. Next on the agenda tonight, we have comments from citizens. There are two sections from citizens' comments, one now and one after the legislation. This is not a debate with council. This is just a time for you to come up and state your opinion. Sensing that William's ready to go first, if anyone else would like to speak in citizens' comments side, just raise your hand, and I'll recognize you.
William, I am William Butcher, 1263 Union Street, Newark. I just have one good comment about the city street maintenance. They did come out in my case, my address, back of my address. They patched up down, it wasn't quiet, there was four potholes. I went down there a couple days ago, and they did one bang-up job. My hat's off to the city street maintenance. And my, well, you know, a comment, you see, Stere Road, it needs to be patched up or pointed up where people were paid. And there's another street around where I live at, I think, I don't know what the name of it is, but it needs to be patched up, has holes in it. And one of my friends got a strike from me, she complained to me, she complained about her street having potholes, they need to be patched up. And let me just say, the bus driver, driving me to Sparks, he complained to me about that one street that goes down there, they need to be patched up too. And let me just say, the street department done, they knew what they're doing. My hat's off to them. All my NBC forecast should be mostly somewhere high in mid-70s, but I am looking at a chance of high, mid-80s chance of showers or thunderstorms by middle of next week. We have high-pressure systems stationed over here right now, not thinking more, it should be coming here. But whatever season, showers or thunderstorms, some of these are severe, sir. I will keep an eye on that for you, and I'll let you know when they get here.
Thank you, William. I know there's a lot of streets that need patching, and they're working on those, so thank you.
My name's Terry Lyle. I live 294 Stere Road here in Newark. I noticed in here that Katie Blanton from the Cincinnati Pitt Crew invited the council over to Columbus to the State House on May 30th at noon for a meet and greet. And don't you people actually see pit bulls and how they really are, and not the perception that most people have? Now, I've got a couple of things. One, I'm rather confused, I guess I can say. I sat here, and Mr. Rath proposed to repeal the BSL. Now, two months later, it was voted on. The dissenters never once voiced an opinion as to what changes need to be made. You could've gone to Mr. Rath at any time and said, "Look, you know, these are my concerns. Can we fix this?" I know I sat out here, right here, and I said, "Look, I'll sit down at that table with you, and I will help you come up with those things, and so will the rest of us." Because we're for stronger punishments for, you want to call them irresponsible owners? Eh, being nice if I say that. Most of them are idiots. But this group that we have, we're not uneducated. There are many college degrees in there. There's actually a PhD in that group. So we're not uneducated. We have done our research. If you choose to listen to the zombies of Dog's Bike dot org, their statistician alone has been proven a fraud. They sensationalize everything. Get to know the dogs. And I feel like, I know I heard, put it on the ballot, well, everyone knows it, 90% of the boaters, and you notice I said "boaters," I didn't say "citizens," have no idea what BSL is. Either they've never heard of it, or if they've heard of it, they don't know. If you're relying on that fact to keep the BSL, that the people will vote to keep it, you're probably right. Because people don't take time to educate themselves. You need an education. And if it goes on the ballot, you are gonna have those zombies from DogBikes.org peppering the advocate and everybody else with their supposed statistics and how bad pit bulls I'm at a loss as to why people didn't educate, or why, if people were concerned, why didn't they come to us? Why didn't they go to Jeremy, Jeff, Doug? Why didn't you go to them and say, "Hey, look, you know, we've got these concerns. Is there some way we can fix this?" I mean, far as I'm concerned, you get what you quote "an irresponsible owner" to lets his dog go out and run loose and does attack somebody? I don't care if you give the owner life in prison. Doesn't bother me one bit. But the people that have been terrorized by this law, I'm not gonna mention names, the ACO, but can't afford this, that are trying their best to make ends meet, but are responsible enough to keep their dogs fenced in, to keep them in the house, to not let them run loose, they're the ones that are being persecuted. And that, you know, that's not right. There's 19 states in this country, and another one with laws sitting in the legislature right now, and that's Georgia, to outlaw BSL within their borders, period, cut and dry. All animals equal, and then you go and you prosecute the dogs that actually do do something. And I've been waiting, what, two months before it was voted down? Another two months, waiting for Mr. Guthrie's version to come out? I mean, I'd like a chance to comment or point out something if I don't think it's right. And I have a question, which is, I know this isn't a question and answer, but I'll make it a statement. None of us have been able to find anywhere where, when BSL was enacted, that it was enacted through a citizen initiative to put it on the ballot. We can't find it. Which means one thing: the council had to vote it into law. Now, if the council had to vote it into law, why isn't the council responsible for voting it out? Let's just do, let's not do away with BSL, but let's do away with breed-specific, and let's just all dogs. And then punish them once, beat a Chihuahua or a Saint Bernard. If it attacks, it's vicious, then let's punish the owner. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lyle. Ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
My name is Missy Schmidt. The address is 39 South Fourth Street, Newark, Ohio, Newark Division of Police. And I'm here to read a letter that you all should've received earlier today in your emails. The person who's supposed to read this unexpectedly wasn't able to make it, so I was nominated.
Can I ask you one thing? Could you speak up just a little bit?
Sure.
Okay.
I can do that. Dear Sir and Madam, I am writing to you on behalf of the Communication Operators of the Newark Division of Police. As you are well aware, there is a proposal before you that may soon require your vote on whether it would be beneficial to further consolidate the city's dispatching services with the Licking County Regional Dispatch Center. I'm writing to ask you to please consider the following issues as you prepare to address this proposal. In 2001, the citizens of Newark passed a safety levy income tax, excuse me, a safety levy income tax of .5% that is adequately allocated to the police fire services. With the help of that, .25%, a quarter percent, the Newark Police Department was built at a cost of over $10 million. $1.8 million was spent on the Communications Bureau alone. The intention at that time was to bring Newark Fire Dispatch back to the city to save money. That never happened. And so we asked, are you going to allow that room to now sit empty after a short 10 years while the taxpayers continue to pay down that debt? And while the citizens pay the county for services that they in good faith believe will be provided by NPD? Second issue: if this consolidation were to happen, the city would lose control over the management of calls and of dispatchers. Citizens will lose the familiarity, experience, and knowledge of NPD dispatchers who are only accountable to the NPD and the citizens of Newark, and utilize these attributes on a daily basis to save lives of both citizens and officers. The city of Ashland recently withdrew from their consolidation with the county sheriff after a number of years, in part because of ongoing quality and related safety problems, which they could not effectively control because they did not have the ability to manage this operation. The city of Mansfield recently declined to combine their services with their county sheriff because they did not believe it would be prudent to give up control of their dispatch operation. Somerset, New Lexington, and Heath Police have refused to consolidate with the respective county sheriffs for a variety, excuse me, for various reasons. The bottom line is the city of Newark may be less safe if such a proposal were to be implemented, and thus far, every citizen who has come to city council meetings has spoken against this proposed merger, along with the FOP and the IAFF, whose services are being dispatched by the county, and the Ashby leadership. The city of Newark is the only jurisdiction that currently pays LCRDC, County 911 Dispatch Center, for dispatching services. The other jurisdictions that utilize them for dispatching services do not pay for it. Also, please keep in mind, since 2005, the city has paid the county over $2.6 million just to dispatch fire EMS services. Imagine if this money had not been paid to the county EMA. What could the city do with such funds? The Newark City Dispatches are willing and able to do the extra fire EMS dispatching. Let me repeat that. The city Newark Dispatches are willing and able to do extra fire EMS dispatching. Are you willing to let the city continue to pay the cost of dispatching for the other seven or eight jurisdictions while your own employees are willing and able to perform this function? Last point: the city administration says the reason for this proposed merger is to make available better technology for the police department. Yet, to the best of our knowledge, no grants have been applied for by the city to update this technology. Since 2006, NPD has given back a combined total of over $1.4 million from the cumulative fiscal years to the city, so the city can utilize these funds in its carryover for the year. Why wasn't this much money budgeted to be spent on technology upgrades? Last year, the eight city of Newark dispatchers cost the city $442,000 to handle over 34,829 dispatch calls, and our calculations suggest that the salaries and benefits of the 12 dispatchers working for the SO cost well over that amount. And yet, they dispatched 32,221 calls for service. The NPD dispatchers handled more calls for less money and less people while working with according to city administration inferior equipment and/or technology. Based on all the above, we are respectfully proposing an alternative approach. Table the proposed legislation for now, and ask the city administration to work together with NPD to come up with a plan that doesn't compromise the safety of the citizens of Newark, and that involves bringing back fire EMS dispatch operation and, with the money saved, upgrading the technology being used at NPD. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to comment to blow email address. Thank you for your time. And it's signed Bill DeVore, Councilwoman. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else for this first section of citizens' comments? Okay, moving on to the legislation. First, we have 15-11 on the first reading.
Ordinance 15-11 by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rath. An ordinance amending the position classification, pay range, and position authorization tables of the Department of Economic and Community Development by the abolishment of one Transit Operations Coordinator in Community Development.
15-11 will be held for a second reading. Next, we have 15-12.
Ordinance 15-12 by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Rath. An ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances and resolutions as part of the various component codes of the codified ordinances, providing for the adoption of the new matter in the updated and revised codified ordinances, repealing ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith and declaring an emergency.
15-12 is an emergency, so we only have one reading. What is your wish? Mr. President, Mr. Cost. Make the motion to adopt 15-12. Second. Motion by Mr. Cost, second by Mr. Bub. Is there any discussion on 15-12? Seeing none, all of them, please call the roll of the vote.
Mr. Johnson. Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta. Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
And Ms. Hall. Yes.
15-12 passes eight to zero. Next, on the first reading, we have 15-13.
Ordinance 15-13 by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rath. An ordinance authorizing and directing the Newark City Safety Director to certify to the Licking County Auditor the sum of $91,008 incurred by the Newark City Property Maintenance Division with respect to the property maintenance violations to be placed as a lien upon certain parcels of real property situated in the city of Newark, Ohio.
15-13 will be held for a second reading. Next, on the second reading, we have 15-28.
Resolution 15-28 by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Rath. A resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Newark to enter into a community development block grant-funded sub-recipient agreement with the hereinafter named organizations to carry out activities included within Newark's fiscal year 2015 Community Development Block Grant One-Year Action Plan.
You've heard the second reading of 15-28. What is your wish? Mr. President. Mr. Marmee. Mrs. Floyd.
I make a motion to accept Resolution 15-28.
Motion by Mrs. Floyd. Second. Second by Mr. Bub. This is the one you're abstaining on. All right. Thank you. Is there any discussion on 15-? Yeah, I'm not sure what the number is, because I just brought it up. 15-28. 28. Thank you. All of them, please call the roll of the vote.
Mr. Johnson. Mr. Marmee.
No.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta. Mr. Blake.
Staying.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
That passes six to one. Next, we have 15-29, also on the second reading.
Resolution 15-29 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rath. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Newark to prepare and submit applications to the Ohio Governor's Office of Criminal Justice Services for fiscal year 2015 Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant Funding.
You've heard the second reading of 15-29. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Blake.
Move to adopt 15-29.
Motion by Mr. Blake.
Okay.
Second by Mr. Cost. Is there any discussion on 15-29? Seeing none, all of them, please call the roll of the vote.
Mr. Johnson. Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta. Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
And Ms. Hall.
Yes.
15-29 passes eight to zero. Next, we have 15-30.
Resolution 15-30 by Mr. Blake, Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rath. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Newark to submit an application to the Ohio Department of Public Safety Office for Federal Fiscal Year 2016 Ohio Traffic Safety Grants Program, Selective Traffic Enforcement Program, and the Impaired Driving Enforcement Program.
You've heard the second reading of 15-30. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Blake.
Move to adopt 15-30.
Motion by Mr. Blake.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bub. Is there any discussion on 15-30? Seeing none, all of them, please call the roll of the vote.
Mr. Johnson. Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta. Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
And Ms. Hall.
Yes.
15-30 passes eight to zero. Next, we have 15-32.
Resolution 15-32 by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Blake, Mr. Rath. A resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service of the city of Newark, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into contract for the off-site disposal of bio solids from the Newark Wastewater Treatment Plant.
You've heard the second reading of 15-32. What is your wish? Mr. President, Mr. Cost. I'd like to make a motion to adopt 15-32. Motion by Mr. Cost, second. Second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 15-32? Seeing none, all of them, please call the roll of the vote.
Mr. Johnson. Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta. Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
And Ms. Hall.
Yes.
15-32 passes eight to zero. Next, we have 15-33.
Resolution 15-33 by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rath. A resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to enter into an agreement with specialized legal counsel for the purpose of developing and implementing a program of tax increment financing for the River Trails development and surrounding areas.
You've heard the second reading of 15-33. What is your wish? Mr. President, Mr. Cost. I'd like to make the motion to adopt 15-33. Motion by Mr. Cost.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bub. Is there any discussion on 15-33? All of them, please call the roll of the vote.
Mr. Johnson. Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta. Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
And Ms. Hall.
Yes.
15-33 passes eight to zero. Next, we have on the second reading, 15-34.
Resolution 15-34 by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Blake, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rath. A resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service of the city of Newark, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into contract subject to the appropriation of funds for the Will Rich and Yorkshire Drive Waterline Project.
You've heard the second reading of 15-34. What is your wish? Mr. President, Mr. Cost. I'd like to make the motion to adopt 15-34. Motion by Mr. Cost. Second by Mr. Bub. Do we have any discussion on 15-34? Seeing none, all of them, please call the roll of the vote.
Mr. Johnson. Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta. Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
And Ms. Hall.
Yes.
15-34 passes eight to zero. Next, on the agenda for the second reading, we have 15-35.
Resolution 15-35 by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Blake, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rath. A resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service and the Director of Public Safety to negotiate a contract with the Licking County Board of Commissioners and the Licking County Emergency Management Agency, subject to the appropriations of funds for the provision of emergency 911 communication services on behalf of the city of Newark Division of Police.
You've heard the second reading of 15-35. What is your wish? Mr. President, Mr. Cost. I'd like to make a motion to adopt 15-35. Motion by Mr. Cost, second. Second by Mr. Bub. Is there any discussion on 15-35? Mr. Guthrie?
Yeah, Mr. President, I just want to note, I am going to vote against this. I am grateful to all those who voted to modify this and sort of slow the process down, but I just philosophically, I don't, I can't bring myself to support the concept, and I've said a number of times, and I know that it might be somewhat dangerous territory, inviting bargaining union employees to come in and speak on an issue like this, but I would like to have seen the officers give an explicit invitation to come in and speak pro or con about this subject because of the safety ramifications of this, of what we could end up doing here. So I'll be voting no, but again, I appreciate the fact that this is an approved document.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anyone else on 15-35? Roll of the vote. All of them, please call the roll of the vote.
Mr. Johnson. Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta. Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
No.
And Ms. Hall.
Yes.
15-35 passes seven to one. Next, we have 15-36.
Resolution 15-36 by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Blake, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rath. A resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service to accept bids and sell certain surplus personal property now owned by the city of Newark, Ohio, and declaring that such property is no longer needed for any municipal purpose.
You've heard the second reading of 15-36. What is your wish? Mr. President, Mr. Cost. Make the motion to adopt 15-36. Motion by Mr. Cost. Second. Second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on 15-36? Seeing none, all of them, please call the roll of the vote.
Mr. Johnson. Mr. Marmee.
Yes.
Mr. Rath.
Yes.
Mr. Roletta. Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Mr. Bub.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd.
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
15-36 passes eight to zero. Next, we have 15-37.
Resolution 15-37 by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Blake, Mr. Rath. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
You've heard the second reading of 15-37. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Blake.
Move to adopt 15-37.
Motion by Mr. Blake.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Floyd.[1744.61] Second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on fifteen dash thirty-seven? Seeing none, I'll please call a roll vote.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta? Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
And Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Fifteen dash thirty-seven passes eight zero. Next, we have fifteen dash thirty-eight.
Resolution fifteen dash thirty-eight by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Blake, Mr. Rapp, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Norwalk to prepare and submit an application to the Ohio Department of Transportation for the 2015 Transportation Alternatives Program to partially fund the Riverview Bike Trail Phase One Project.
Heard the second reading of fifteen dash thirty-eight. What is your wish?
Mr. President, Mr. Blake? Move to adopt fifteen thirty-eight.
Motion by Mr. Blake. Second by Mrs. Floyd. Is there any discussion on fifteen dash thirty-eight? Seeing none, I'll please call a roll vote.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta? Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
And Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Fifteen dash thirty-eight passes eight zero. Now, we move to resolutions on the first reading, fifteen dash thirty-nine.
Resolution fifteen dash thirty-nine by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Rapp, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Fifteen, Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, move to waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Blake's asked to waive the two-day reading rule. Second by Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Blake?
This is dealing with employee payouts.
I'll please call a roll to waive the two-day reading rule on fifteen dash thirty-nine.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta? Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived. Mr. Blake?
Mr. President, move to adopt fifteen thirty-nine.
Motion by Mr. Blake. Second by Mrs. Floyd. Do we have any discussion, any other discussion on fifteen dash thirty-nine? Seeing none, I'll please call a roll vote.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta? Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
And Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Fifteen dash thirty-nine passes eight zero. Next, on the first reading, we have fifteen dash forty.
Resolution fifteen dash forty by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Rapp, a resolution in support of adding the Norwalk Earthwork to the United Nations Education, Scientific, and Cultural Education Organizations List of World Heritage Sites.
Fifteen dash forty will be held for two weeks for a second reading. Next, we have fifteen dash forty-one.
Resolution fifteen dash forty-one by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Rapp, a resolution appropriating monies for current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Fifteen dash forty-one will be held for a second reading. Next, we have fifteen dash forty-two.
Resolution fifteen dash forty-two by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Rapp, a resolution of intent to appropriate the real estate known as parcel number zero-five-four-dash-two-four-four-one-seven-zero-dash-zero-zero-point-zero-zero-zero, Norwalk Licking County, for maintaining and improving Thirtieth and Church Street within the city of Norwalk, Ohio, authorizing the mayor to give notice to the owner of such lands as required by law and declaring an emergency.
These next four are all emergencies. They all deal with the same situation except different parcels. Since this is an emergency, it only gets read once. What is your wish?
Mr. President, Mr. Cost? I'd like to make the motion to adopt fifteen dash forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five.
Just go with forty-two for now. Motion for fifteen forty-two by Mr. Cost.
Second by Mr. Rapp.
Is there any discussion on fifteen dash forty-two? Seeing none, I'll please call a roll vote.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta? Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
And Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Fifteen, that was yes?
Yes.
Fifteen dash forty-two passes eight zero. Next, we have fifteen dash forty-three.
Resolution fifteen dash forty-three by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Rapp, a resolution of intent to appropriate the real estate known as parcel zero-five-four-dash-two-three-five-seven-seven-zero-dash-zero-zero-point-zero-zero-zero, Norwalk Licking County, for the maintaining and improving Thirtieth and Church Streets within the city of Norwalk, Ohio, authorizing the mayor to give notice to the owner of such lands as required by law and declaring an emergency.
Fifteen dash forty-three again is an emergency. It only gets read once. What is your wish?
Mr. President, Mr. Cost? I'd like to make the motion to adopt fifteen dash forty-three.
Motion by Mr. Cost. Second by Mr. Bub. Do we have any discussion on fifteen dash forty-three? Seeing none, I'll please call a roll vote.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta? Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Fifteen dash forty-three passes eight zero. Next, we have fifteen dash forty-four.
Resolution fifteen dash forty-four by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Rapp, a resolution of intent to appropriate the real estate known as parcel zero-five-four-dash-two-four-two-nine-nine-four-dash-zero-zero-point-zero-zero-zero, Norwalk Licking County, for maintaining and improving Thirtieth and Church Streets within the city of Norwalk, Ohio, authorizing the mayor to give notice to the owner of such lands as required by law and declaring an emergency.
You've heard the reading of fifteen dash forty-four. Once again, it is an emergency. What is your wish?
Mr. President, Mr. Cost? I'd like to make a motion to adopt fifteen dash forty-four.
Motion by Mr. Cost. Second by Mr. Bub. Any discussion on fifteen dash forty-four? Seeing none, I'll please call a roll vote.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta? Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
And Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Fifteen dash forty-four passes eight zero. And our last piece of legislation this evening is fifteen dash forty-five.
Resolution fifteen dash forty-five by Mr. Cost, Mrs. Floyd, Mr. Rapp, a resolution of intent to appropriate the real estate known as parcel zero-five-four-dash-two-four-zero-eight-five-two-dash-zero-zero-point-zero-zero-zero, Norwalk Licking County, for maintaining and improving Thirtieth and Church Streets within the city of Norwalk, Ohio, authorizing the mayor to give notice to the owners of such lands as required by law and declaring an emergency.
Fifteen dash forty-five, once again, an emergency. What is your wish?
Mr. Cost? Once again, I'd like to make a motion to adopt fifteen dash forty-five.
Motion by Mr. Cost. Second by Mr. Rapp. Is there any discussion on fifteen dash forty-five? Seeing none, I'll please call a roll vote.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rapp?
Yes.
Mr. Roletta? Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
And again, it is an emergency. It takes seven votes to pass, so this one also passes eight zero. And that concludes the legislation this evening. Thank you so much for your attention to that. Next on the agenda, once again, is comments from citizens. You get your second chance to make a comment if you'd like. Again, this is not a debate with council. This is just your chance to come up and have yourself heard. Lee?
Listen, when, when, didn't we use Doppler ten? Weren't we using channel ten before? Yeah, I tell you Doppler ten. Doppler ten forecast, we should see some shores, what kind of storm movies are here by night? It should be out here by tomorrow. We should see some nice sunny temperatures, nice warm temperatures, high to mid upper seventies, but windy, high to mid upper eighties, I'm looking at, by Thursday, high about seventy-nine, about ten-day forecast, but it's sunny, high near seventy-nine degrees. Now, we'll get your ten-day Doppler ten forecast, and I got me one comment. I remember a long time ago that the city of Norwalk used to have a flint festival down here on the square a long time ago. I miss that. That flint festival told the city, told the total story and rich heritage of the city of Norwalk. I'd see that, I'd see that bring, I'd see that brought back again. And had the kinds of great music, great food, and I miss that, and there was, there was the city would bring that back, but I passed.
Sounds like a good week for shorts this week.
Yes.
Anyone else this evening? Mr. Rapp?
Could you sit around a minute? Could I ask you a question afterwards? Paul Moran, sixty-three North Fourth Street. You want to drill another second part, second thing of this, newspapers, Five to Thrive, working with the addiction column, article, number two. Once again, the Gannon Advocate bypasses Norwalk in this ongoing series. I mean, there's no mention of Norwalk anywhere in this, and this is a very important issue, addiction, drugs and alcohol. They missed a great opportunity last Thursday night, the news media. There was a public program at Crossroads Baptist Church right downtown here, and I think if they would have heard the testimonies of these ex-addicts, they'd been in tears. They have a very powerful program open to the public. Anybody could show up, and it's sad that they missed such an event. And they're worried about what's going on in Cincinnati and here and there, and Norwalk continues to be forgotten. And it's just unfortunate because there's a lot going on here. You know, Donna Gibson, I'm sure most of us, if all of us, may not, may or may not know her, and I wish the mayor and the city would get together and recognize this woman. Very hard, dedicated, we're working with addicts and other people, problems, and she does deserve to be recognized by the city, and I'm glad to be here to be part of it if that were to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rapp. Anyone else this evening? Okay. We'll move on to the administration. Do we have anyone from administration who'd like to make a comment? Okay. We'll move to miscellaneous. The office of the law director?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Law Director. Mayor, Paul?
I will also pass.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Marmy?
Oh, I guess I am first.
Well, Mr. Johnson wants first.
Yes.